Good evening. This is the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 12, 2022. It is 6:00 PM. We're at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and GCTV is recording this meeting. I'd like to move right into the agenda, and first, a roll call and a call to order. Secretary Ekstrom, please.
Member Denis.
Here.
Ekstrom, I am here. Member Johnson?
Member Johnson Musad, here.
Oh, my apologies. Uh, Member Martini?
I am here.
Member Martini's here.
We can do that.
Chair Poiroti?
Here.
Vice Chair Wall?
Here.
Member, Mayor Weidiger?
Here.
All are present? Yeah, we have a forum.
Okay. A call to order at 6:01. We do have, if anyone could help, we've got two members who are saying their mics are not working. If we could get someone to assist us with that. We will move into approval of the minutes from September 14. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. That was Member Wall, and a second? That was, I think, Member Martini, yes. And any discussion? I'm not hearing any discussion. We'll do a vote, oral vote. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? So that passes unanimously. And next on the agenda is public comment. I am guessing from the crowd in the room that we've got public comment tonight. Susan Farver? If you wouldn't mind, sir, just state your name and the town that you live in, and you have three minutes.
Hold on, hold on, Coach. Is your green light on on there?
Get a hold down.
No, there you go.
Now it's on, all right. Born and raised in this community. I'm a taxpayer, live in Greenfield. I was a teacher in this system for 30-plus years. I was the athletic director for 20, coached a variety of sports for 50 years. Approximately 25 years ago, when I was athletic director, we had a rule in the state governed by the Massachusetts and a Scholastic Athletic Association that homeschoolers could not participate in athletics. During that time, I know myself, I had denied kids in this community the opportunity to participate along with other communities. And a community allowed, was going to allow a player to participate, all the principals and athletic directors involved playing at those schools, got together, drew up a letter. Those schools signed it. It was sent to the school that if we played them and they allowed this person to play, we were going to forfeit the game. I'm going to say, this is about 25 years ago, shortly after everybody signed a letter, it was sent to the school, everybody that signed it was summoned to Worcester Court. We were being sued because of the issue of not allowing a home schooler to participate. And very quickly, the MIA dropped the rule, and homeschoolers are allowed to participate and have been since then. And now, I guess, we're back in the same predicament. No other schools in our area deny homeschoolers the opportunity to participate in athletics. I know that, and I honestly don't know how many kids in Greenfield, I'm going to say three or four, that are homeschooled. I know this fall, they were allowed to play for whatever reason, but from winter on, they're not going to be allowed to play. I have a problem with that. At the time when MIA didn't allow them, I didn't have a problem, because it was a statewide rule, and we abided by the rule. However, it was no longer a rule, and is not, by the MIAA. The other thing that has a tendency to bother me, and believe me what I'm going to say now, I'm very much in favor of, we have two co-op teams. Greenfield is the host of. One is an eight-team co-op, one is a four-team. We have kids from other communities playing on these teams, but yet, we have kids in this community whose parents pay taxes, and they're not being allowed to do what they would like to do, which is participate in athletics. And after all the stuff with COVID-19, a year of not having anything, the second year was really watered down, I think it's extremely important that they're involved in things, whatever it might be, athletics, you know, the band, whatever it might be. And I really think the rule-
Sir, I'm going to have to interrupt you. Your time, your three minutes is up.
Oh, can I finish what I'm going to say?
Go ahead.
And I, like I said, I really feel it's wrong to deny them, and during all the COVID stuff, I think it's even more important that they're involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Bennett, called by Jackie.
You have three minutes to state your name and where you live before you speak. Thank you.
Judy Bennett. I live on Conway Street in Greenfield. I'm an educator at the high school. I've been there about nine years. I also am a class advisor, a mentee in the building as well for new, or mentor teacher for new teachers. So I'm here to just talk about our contract and the budget. I know that's on the agenda. So our Unit A contract for teachers is 469 days expired. Our Unit C contract for our really vital instructional assistance is 104 days expired. And I just happened to be kind of searching around, and I found a couple fact sheets from the White House that have recently been released, and they had some good talking points. There was a fact sheet from April 31 of this year, and one from October 5 of this year. One of the headlines is recruit, respect, retain. And I'm really concerned that our district is not doing those three things that are really vital to keep our teachers here, to bring teachers in. And another headline, pay educators competitively. President Biden's American Rescue Plan provided $122 billion to K through 12 schools. The president, U.S. Secretary of Education, U.S. Secretary of Labor urged states and districts to use these funds to increase compensation for teachers, invest in teacher pipeline programs, and hire more professionals across the education workforce. These investments not only provide greater supports to students, but also reduce the burden on current teachers. Right? Schools can't retain, recruit, or retain teachers they need unless jobs in education are good jobs. Adjusted for inflation, the average weekly wages of public school teachers only increased by $29 between 1996 and 2021. That's 25 years, and that's directly from the White House. There is a proposed budget that is going to possibly send quite a lot more money to Title I schools, right, supporting schools serving students from low-income backgrounds, which is Greenfield, right, where a Title I school. Also, roughly 92% of funding for public schools come from the state and local levels. State and local leaders must also take decisive action to provide schools with resources they need to pay teachers competitively and to close funding gaps undermining schools serving low-income communities. So that's directly from the White House. So again, 469 days, our contract has been expired. We've been working, we've been working really hard, and we really need our contract to be updated and negotiated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie, and then Lucy.
Please state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jackie Panger. I live in Brattleboro, Vermont. I currently work as a math coach and interventionist in our district, thanks to S, thanks to Essar funding. But for most of my 14 years in Greenfield, I've been a classroom teacher. I speak tonight because the school committee reviews and gives approval to the budget of this district's public schools. It is my understanding that the district is claiming that they cannot afford to offer a financial package in line with what educators in surrounding communities have received for cost-of-living adjustments due to budgetary restrictions, and this is good news and bad news. The good news is that this committee has the power and authority to fight for this request on the behalf of educators. The bad news is that it seems that they believe it can't be done. It can't be done. When do we fall for that line? It is a matter of priorities, isn't it? When we want something badly enough, when we believe it's worth a fight, that phrase changes significantly. As educators, we refer to that as a growth mindset. For example, we would say to our students, certainly it seems as though the evidence is pointing to challenges that will make what needs to be done fairly difficult, but given the desire and the willingness to go after it, I know we can do our best to get it done. In the 1993 movie Dave, the President of the United States became incapacitated. His staff found a look-alike for the president and asked him to take the president's place to keep the government running. Of course, they did not share their motivation to keep their less-than-honorable plans in place for this administration. Unfortunately for them, Dave was a very honest person. And with discovering the plan to have a daycare funding cut from the budget, he worked all night with an accountant friend of his to find a way in the government budget to make it work. He brought this, his proposal to the staff, and basically shamed them into recognizing that some of the costs that they had deemed important paled in comparison to supporting this worthy cause. Once approved, the staff celebrated the opportunity to actually do something good in their roles. And so I implore you, as people who can, show appreciation for the hard work that educators do every day, who can stop educators from leaving Greenfield for more lucrative opportunities close by, and who can do the work of finding the money in the nooks and crannies that exist and may be drawn from when needed. I ask you to engage in a growth mindset. Believe that you can, and don't settle when others tell you you can't. You'll be glad you did, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
And then Catherine.
Hello. My name's Luke Martin. I live on Haywood Street in Greenfield, and I have two children in the Greenfield schools. I'm also a staff member at the high school. I'm here to urge the school committee to settle contracts with the GEA, to include reasonable cost-of-living adjustments in those contracts, and to advocate for funds to do so with the mayor. I hope that you can see these things in terms of the overall health of our school system. As I mentioned, I have two children in Greenfield schools. My daughter had an absolute hero of a teacher during the remote school year, who somehow kept a five-year-old interested, curious, engaged, and connected for seven months through a computer screen. I don't know how he did it, but I was totally in awe. Unfortunately, that teacher has since left Greenfield. My daughter also had a successful return to school in first grade with a good teacher, an excellent IA who stepped in as a long-term sub, and an excellent reading teacher who she connected with and adored. All three of them have since left Greenfield. This year, my daughter was supposed to have a certain second-grade teacher. That teacher has also left Greenfield. So we got a welcome letter from a generic second-grade teacher rather than a real person, and only found out who her teacher was in September. Her school has also lost first and third-grade teachers in just the past few months. Parents want stability. We, as a staff, want stability. Losing good teachers, as we have in Greenfield, should be a concern for everyone involved, and you should be doing everything you can to recruit and retain, retain good teachers. But here we are, a year and a half after our contract expired, and hearing rumors of there simply being no money available for reasonable cost-of-living adjustments. This is what drives teachers away: not being valued enough as professionals to have valid, up-to-date contracts, not being valued enough as professionals to be compensated in a way that reflects the nearly impossible job we've been doing since the pandemic hit. I simply ask that you make it a priority, because it's hard for teachers to believe that there isn't enough money. It's hard to believe because we've had administrators hired at 25% to 35% higher salaries than their predecessors just three to four years ago, and administrators throughout the district who regularly receive 2% to 5% cost-of-living adjustments in their own contracts. It's hard to believe there's no money when Greenfield receives $6.4 million in Essar funds, which, contrary to what we're often told, can be used to compensate teachers. In fact, not only can it be used for that, but in December of last year, the U.S. Secretary of Education published a letter urging local school districts to do so. He said that Essar money was providing vital resources in part to, quote, "improve compensation to recruit and retain educators and school staff." His letter even listed and prioritized strategies for using Essar funds. The top priority, and I quote, "increase educator and staff compensation." It's now even harder to believe that there isn't enough money when the town has $4 million in certified free cash, which can be used at the mayor's discretion, and a mere portion of which can be used to replenish the contract stabilization fund that we're told is nearly depleted. Unfortunately, it's becoming a lot easier for us to believe it's just not a priority, that the teaching staff is not valued and respected by those in charge.
I do need you to finish up. Thank you.
Sure. We certainly hope that this is not the case, but we are waiting to be proven wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Berylston. I live in Greenfield. I'm a teacher currently at Federal Street. I have worked at Four Corners in the past, and I have a sixth grader at the middle school here. Luke is a very hard act to follow, by the way, so forgive me. So like the other teachers you have heard from, of course, I feel that having living wages accounted for is incredibly important to us, although I almost would like to reserve my advocacy for the IAs. I did start in this district as a one-on-one IA, then I was a kindergarten IA, and I continue to have either healthy or unhealthy classrooms depending on what, what kind of IA support I get. So I also want them to have living wages almost more than the teachers right now. There's a lot of holes in those positions that I'm aware of. And as I understand it, there has also been a change in the, the way that jobs are advertised and, and hired and interviewed. I believe it used to be that principals were responsible for hiring within their buildings, and, and that often there were more details of what those jobs might be, which school, what kind of responsibilities would be. And I believe that now we have general IA positions listed, and I worry that that is impacting who is applying and who is taking the time to set up a school spring account and seek out our district, particularly when pay's not great, if they don't know whether it's going to be a good match for them. My experience, in, I think, 2018, I saw one of, an IA position, and I applied. I was offered, I have an early childhood education background. I've worked in preschools and kindergartens for years. And I was offered a building monitor position in the middle school. Of course, I said no, that was not a good fit. What I did was I reached out to the then-principal of Four Corners, Jay Toomey, and I said, if you had a position that opens up there, I'd love to come there. And I think some of these personalizations that sort of honor people's wishes, whether they have children in a school, whether they have even teachers or, you know, coworkers that they know, I think those relationships are often what keep people and help us retain staff that we desperately need right now. And the other change that has been challenging this year is that teachers are not, no longer given access to their classrooms at their discretion and being trusted to set alarms and use our time as we choose. Some of us have family issues where, you know, the hours that an administrator or custodian is in the building don't work for us. Some of us have learning disabilities and, and manage our time differently. And so it's been really challenging to try to be out the door by five and to not have weekend access, and to kind of feel as though I have my time and the trust to set alarms, and-
That was, that was very apropos. Set alarms.
So those challenge, ooh, sorry. So those challenges have, have made the start of this year particularly challenging. So please consider those changes.
Thank you. You said we're done. Is there anyone else for public comment, please? Okay, thank you all. I, at this point, would ask for, from the school committee, a motion to move the strategic planning overview, item 10, up to be item four, which is the next item immediately after public comment. Can I get a motion to that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And this is, just for discussion purposes, this is just, we have Judy here, Judy Hul, Dr. Judy Hul, who many people might remember from her time in the district. She is here on behalf of TMS, who are our strategic planning partners, to give an overview. And we would just ask that we give her, what do you need, 10 minutes, Judy? Yeah, 10 minutes to give us that overview now. Any questions or further discussion?
I appreciate that Dr. Hul is here, but I will hazard a guess that most of the folks here would be really interested in the next budget item. Would be really interested in reporting the administration, right after our new representative and budget update. So I'm just noting that will delay everyone from the rest of the time.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Anyone a no vote on moving this item? One, two, three? Three no votes. And the yes votes? So we've got four, so the motion passes. Dr. Hul, please join us wherever you'd plan to join us from. We're happy to have you. Nice to see you. Thank you for being here.
Nice to see you as well, Chair Poiroti. I promised to be brief so that I won't hang people up, but I am double-booked tonight, so we do appreciate the grace to be able to talk to you sooner rather than later. So you approved a bid submission from TMS to facilitate the strategic planning process for the Greenfield Public Schools. And so tonight, I just want to kind of overview what that process is about, where we are at right now, and where, where we will be headed throughout the process. There are four of our team members who are working on facilitating the development of the strategic plan. I want to be clear from the outset, TMS will not write the plan for you. This plan will come from you. Our job is to just facilitate that process. So the first thing that happened was that we established a strategic planning task force, and there is a list of the people who are members. And Mayor Weidiger, I am going to apologize in advance, your first name is not spelled correctly. Thanks to autocorrect, and I didn't catch it. So I do apolo- I, well, I apologize anyway. I should have caught it, and I didn't. So you can see the list of the members. The process will happen in two phases, and we've just started phase one. And the first phase of the process is to gather a lot of data and present that forward to the strategic planning task force. The first phase, which we did last week, was to go through what's known as a SCOT analysis. Some of you may know it as SWOT. I don't like the word weakness, because it can sometimes be used as an excuse, so I've, my version of it is to call them challenges, because challenges can always be met. So what we did was, we did an inward look at the district, and people brainstormed what they thought were the strengths of the district and what they thought were the challenges of, of the district. And then we did an outward look, looking at opportunities and threats from society at large across some different lenses, so that we would know that those are the context in which the plan would be developed. We're going to review the data that was collected at the next meeting, so that way, people who were not able to be in attendance will be able to weigh in on those data as well. From that SCOT analysis, we will be developing a survey that will go out to all stakeholders in the community to make sure that we have a perception check. The strategic planning group is only about 20 people, and obviously, there's a lot more people in the city than that, so we want to make sure that those perceptions are deemed valid as well. So following the survey, there will be opportunities for stakeholder groups to participate in focus group interviews that will help us gather even more data. We'll report those data out by themes to the task force. So again, all of that data will help feed into what's going on. The other piece that we're going to do is, we're going to conduct an equity audit, and we're going to use the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium equity audit tool, which is a nationally recognized tool. It helps just sort of assess the state of affairs with regard to equity and access for all learners in any school district. And so we'll be using those data as well to try and help the task force and the administration inform their plan. We'll also do an organizational review, look at your org chart, job descriptions, the recent NSDAQ report, other policies. That will be a part of that. We'll also be interviewing key administrative positions and people within central office so that we get a good sense of what operate, you know, people see as operational strengths and challenges. We're also conducting some data analyses of student academic achievement, which will include MCAS, local assessments, SAT, ACT, and other benchmarks such as attendance, graduation rates, discipline rates, special education rates, et cetera. That will be done by the data analysis portion of our team. We have signed a data confidentiality agreement with the district, so that obviously, any and all data that we collect that is student-sensitive will be securely held within, within highest protocols. Any data that are reported out will be reported only in the aggregate, and again, just to protect everybody's confidentiality. Once we take all those data and the task force looks at them and begins to move forward then, we begin the process of facilitating the development of the plan. So there will be several tasks that we'll do around that, and that's building some consensus around student outcomes. Greenfield High School has a very clear set of core values, beliefs, and learning expectations that we'll use as a starting point, and look at benchmarks for preschool, when they leave elementary school, when they leave middle school, and try and get sort of that through line as students go through the process. So the task force will be working on that particular piece. We'll then facilitate a process where the task force can review and suggest some, some revisions to the current vision and mission statements to reflect the data that we've gathered in phase one and the consensus building process. With the help of the administrative leadership team, who will be charged with the implementation of the plan, the task force will develop a plan that will be somewhere in the neighborhood of either three to five years, and that's yet to be determined by the task force as to the length of the plan, with some strategic SMART goals, SMART being specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. Implementation steps, persons responsible, benchmarks for tracking progress, and so on, will all be tied to the data and the revised vision and mission. Once all of that plan is created and the task force is ready, then that plan will be presented to you as a school committee for your review and approval. Once we get to that point, then, TMS will work on the development of an implementation plan with the administrative leadership team, taking a look at indicators and benchmarks that will note progress moving through. We'll also launch a communications plan that will include both print, web-based, and media outlets to make sure that there's a high level of community awareness and to build support for the plan. This work really drives everything that you do as a- This work really drives everything that you do as a district, from setting budgets to all of that business, so in order to improve operations and student outcomes. So just in closing, just want to thank the school committee for this opportunity to facilitate this work. It is a process and work that I am passionate about, so I'm pleased to be the project lead for this, for you. So we look forward to working with you and with all of the stakeholders in the city as we create the plan.
Thank you. If it's okay with you, I'll open up for committee questions.
Absolutely.
Questions from the school committee, or comments from the school committee about the plan as presented? Yeah, Member Martini, go ahead.
I wanted to ask a few questions about the makeup of your crew. So in regards to the task force, I noticed that we have a number of administrators, but it doesn't look like there is-- Thank you. It looks like the special education director or someone from that department is not a member of the task force. Is that right?
No. That's, I mean, yes, that is correct. However, I should answer that question.
So I am wondering why not, and especially since a number of these items, in terms of data gathering and analysis and development here, seem to be really pertinent to that. And also, in regards to the parent representatives, I noticed that GMS and AEL are absent, and I was also wondering if the task force is thinking about involving someone from the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council?
The CPAC, I will be honest, was not thought as a particular entity, but I think certainly that could be entertained as a group to reach out to. We did reach out to parents looking for, and, you know, representatives from each building. And so that's the group that has responded to the invitation. Certainly, we can reach back out to those folks and take a look from there, and take a look at some more special education.
So the membership on the task force is still open, changeable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It seems important to me to make sure that special education is represented by those in the school district who are specifically responsible for that, and also parents. So that was just the first thing that this brought to my mind. And I was also wondering about the Director of Behavioral Services. I understand we recently, we recently hired someone, or as of last month, it sounded like we were successful? Yes. So that also seems like something that would be really pertinent. Student behavior has been a huge issue in the district, not just last year and presently, but it's something that needs to be contended with and seems central to me. So I was wondering about that individual. And I also noticed that there, the student representatives just say "to be determined", and I was wondering if, is that, how is that being determined? Is there going to be a student representative? Looks like there should be two from GHS.
We've asked the principal to nominate, or to seek out a couple of students to serve on the task force. I just haven't heard back yet, so I will chase that one down.
Great, thank you. In terms of the data gathering, you mentioned a survey that would go out to faculty, staff, parents, and caregivers, and community members as a perception check, which sounds like a great idea. I, in my experience with surveys from the district, they tend to be quantitative, and the options given often don't, like, give me the chance to actually express what I, my views or thoughts. And I was, I was wondering about this survey. Is this going to be qualitative? Will it give people the chance to give you a narrative of their thoughts, or is it going to be a A, B, C, D, multiple-choice kind of survey?
It's going to be mixed methods, so it will be both.
Okay, great. In regards to the equity audit, I was wondering if this is specifically going to account for equity in terms of students with disabilities? This is a, it's a major issue for Greenfield, and if we're going to be talking about ensuring equitable access to curriculum, instruction, and support services, it seems like that should be a central topic in that equity assessment. Is that going to be covered by the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium?
Yes.
When they do this? Great. In the data analysis, you mentioned MCAS, local assessments, and SAT, ACT. I don't really know what you mean by local assessments.
Well, the district administers assessments to students, the dibbles for early literacy, map assessments, if I remember correctly, and other things like that. So any of those kinds of screening tests that the district administers to help inform student levels of learning will be data that we'll be looking at.
Great, that's helpful, thank you. And my last question was, when you say you'll be looking at benchmarks, including special education rates, I just wasn't sure what that means. Does that mean the number of students in special education? Does that mean student outcomes for students in special education, or what does--
It would be looking at enrollment in special education, how many students are enrolled within district, how did district placements, types of placements, those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Member Deneve, go ahead.
Thank you. Kate asked, like, all the questions I had. You always do. But I had one last question. I was wondering, what is the estimated cost, maybe this has come up before, for this overview? Do you have an idea of what the cost will be to the district?
The cost was in the bid of $24,000 for the year.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, comments, discussion from the committee? I'm not hearing any. Thank you, Dr. Hul.
Thank you, Chair Perioti, and thank you all. We look forward to working with you.
For sure, thanks. We are on to item four, the, I'm sorry, it's now item five, but whatever, I'm not going to do that all night. The report of the student representatives, and it looks like we have Mr. Toomey, and also our new student rep, and is it Nate? Is that your name?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome?
Yes.
I'll let you guys do your thing.
All right, we will try to move through this quickly. But to begin with student council, as a part of the Green River Cleanup, we collected two truckloads of garbage along the bike path through the Green River. Thirteen students traveled to East Hampton High for our annual WMASC Fall Conference, and our keynote speaker was John Stetson, America's Favorite Mentalist. He spoke to us about the importance of listening to listen, not just to respond, to be present in the moment, and look for clues all around us about what others are thinking and feeling. This fits nicely with a theme of our conference, which is "Looking for Leaders, Could It Be You?", which is themed around detectives and research. Last month, we held class officer elections for each grade, and there are still a few spots left to be filled. On Monday, as a part of a bonding, many of us met up at the Mike's Corn Maze in Sunderland. We were broken into three groups and worked together to figure out a way through the maze, answering trivia questions along the way. Next week will be our annual Pink Out, where we will donate 25 cents per student or staff member dressed in pink to Raise of Hope, as well as collect any donations for the cause.
For the GHS Key Club, they conducted a in-all-campus cleanup last week and plan to do another soon. They're gearing up to help at the Halloween celebration at the YMCA, as well as reading to preschoolers in November, as well as their annual Green Wave Turkey Trot. We recently applied for a Sandy Hook Promise Grant to support our work in inclusiveness. We meet each Thursday after school in the gymnasium. New members are always welcome to join.
After a fast start to athletics, athletics are coming to an end with just two weeks left. Western Mass playoffs start October 24th, and state playoffs start November 2nd. Senior nights are coming up for all sports. Boys and girls cross-country had ours last, or yesterday, which was October 11th. Girls soccer is October 17th at 6:00 p.m. at Vets Field. Volleyball is October 18th at 6:00 p.m. in the GHS Gym. Boys soccer is October 18th, 6:00 p.m. at Vets Field. Field hockey is October 19th, 6:00 p.m. at Vets Field. Football and cheer are October 21st, 7:00 p.m. at Vets Field. Congratulations to all seniors who are playing sports this year.
NHS has already been moving, meeting each, every other week on Tuesdays to discuss plans for the year. We've already conducted volunteering at the open house and meet and greet, along with some childcare at school committee meetings and events. Invitations went out to newly qualified candidates in late September. Most candidates turned in their applications, and the NHS Faculty Council met this week to select new members. New members will be in, introduced into the National Honor Society on Thursday, October 20th, at 6:00 p.m. in the GHS auditorium at our annual introduction ceremony.
For Spanish Club, plans are underway for our Dia de los Muertos celebration at the end of October. We have met twice in September to dance and plan activities and fundraisers for our upcoming trip to Puerto Rico. We just finished a butter braids fundraiser and are getting ready for an online catalog sale, and our annual wreath fundraiser to help fund the trip in April.
French Club is in full swing this fall. We went apple picking at Apex Orchard in September and have a pumpkin carving and movie night planned for October 26th. We are currently selling picture, or selling pies and cookie doughs throughout, through October 18th to fundraise for our April trip to Quebec.
For the music department, this past weekend, 16 members of the Greenfield High School Band traveled to UMass Amherst to participate in the 38th Annual UMass Band Day, where they got to perform alongside the UMass Minutemen Marching Band and about 2,000 other high school band students from across Massachusetts and New England in a massive combined halftime show at a UMass football game. The GHS Band is currently preparing for the rest of GHS home football games, the ragshag parade on Halloween, Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, and our winter concert on January 12th.
Your book is underway. We recently secured three new parasonic LEMIC cameras, which we have been using to capture events like the recent pep rally, sporting events, and candid shots around the school.
The Social Justice Club is having their first meeting Thursday, October 13th, and they hope to see people there. Spectrum meets every Thursday, and has been busy meeting with new members, electing officers, and planning activities for this year.
Library Club is meeting weekly on Thursdays. We elected officers and began planning our book to movie programs that will run this winter. At the end of October, we will host Krista Reed from the Imaginary Bookshop to lead a spooky writing workshop.
And for general student activities, this week, classes are beginning to meet in preparation for the upcoming lip sync next month to select their class themes, following the overall school theme, which was announced to be Disney movies. Classes will be making their official selection at the student council meeting this Sunday at 6:00 p.m. That covers everything. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer anything. Thank you.
Thank you both. Nate, you're like a natural. I would not know it's your first meeting. Any questions or comments from the school committee? Thank you both for being here, appreciate it. See you next month.
Nate, it gets easier, don't worry about it.
He was great.
I know he was great, I'm just saying.
So we're on to the reports from the administration, and ASKP, you're up first.
Thank you. An update on professional development. On October 19th, all of the three elementary schools are going to have an onsite trainer from CKLA being in each building. They're going to visit classrooms, as well as collaboration meetings, and then the trainer is going to stay for the faculty meeting to answer any ongoing questions with the rollout of the new ELA curriculum. November 8th, we have a professional development day coming up district-wide. We're planning numerous workshops to continue ongoing supportive teachers in CKLA Amplify, CKLA Language Studio for ELL staff, illustrative math, and Get Set for School. The district is also working with the Collaborative to try to get better professional development for our specialist teachers. CAS is creating a Franklin County cohort of all different activities for the specialist teachers that are going to be offered at area, local schools, and we're going to send our staff there so that they can collaborate with other professionals in their fields of expertise. So I'm excited about that. Library update, we're trying to finish up the weeding at Discovery School. There's a little bit left to do, and then we are going to move on to the Academy of Early Learning and tackle their library. I wanted to report the elementary and middle school. New librarians have happily reported to me an increase in the use of the libraries by our K-27 students. Obviously, we knew that would happen now that they're open and they have a librarian, but those librarians' emails to me were just exponentially happy with the numbers that actually are being reported, so I thought I would share that. Grants, we just recently learned that our Title I grant was approved, so we are excited to get that email. That grant continues to allow us to support intervention services at all of our schools, support family engagement nights, teacher mentoring, district-wide equity and diversity work, so we are excited to hear that news. We also recently obtained the civics grant. I met with the high school history department last week, as well as today, and we were in deep discussion about the civics project for students not only in eighth grade, but grades nine through 12, also using those funds to give experiences in civic engagement for all of our students. So we have some great ideas on the table, and hopefully, we can spend that money wisely this year and really give our students what they need. The district recently received their approval for our TAG grant, and that TAG grant this year is going to be used to continue to support leadership teams district-wide. The TAG grant is no longer school-specific, it is district-wide now, so we'll be able to support leadership teams across the district. And lastly, the high school math department has joined me in a DESI High Quality Instructional Material Professional Learning Network. So we're going to go through the same process that we have done in the past for CKLA and ELA, and really look at high-quality math curriculum materials for our high school. And that started last week, and we look forward to that process and coming up with great materials for them to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the committee? Mayor Riedegartner, go ahead.
It's not a question, it's a comment. I really look forward to an update on how you decide to use the civics grant, because it's oh-so important. So, thank you.
You're welcome. We'll provide those, certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Member Martini, go ahead.
Previously, you had mentioned that you were still working out new decisions to be made with regards to intervention, and I wondered if you had settled on any particular new program, services, materials for intervention, specifically with regards to literacy, sorry.
Currently, we're using Spire at our elementary schools. With the interventionists at the middle school and high school, they're actually attending a conference that's on grades five through 12, and intervention services used. So both of them, hopefully, are going to, one of them's here, so I'm just giving her the eyes, saying, they're both going to attend that, though, because it is sparse as to what intervention materials are effective and useful at that grade level. So we're trying to pick something that will work for our students and not just randomly choose something that we think might work. So we're going to do a little research and a little due diligence, and hopefully, have some decisions in the coming weeks to get some support materials for them.
That's great. I'll look forward to hearing what you find out from that. And I wondered if you could be a little bit more specific about how the TAG grant will support leadership teams? What does that mean exactly? Does that mean that these funds will be used to provide stipends? Does it provide materials? What does it provide for these teams?
It's going to be used to provide stipends, so that teachers can represent the leadership in each of their buildings and work with their principals towards school-wide initiatives and district-wide initiatives. It also is going to be used for professional development on the structure and parameters of leadership teams. There is some SSOS and DESI folks that are going to be visiting onsite and providing that professional development to all of us, so that we can all be working towards the same initiatives and goals, and really be strategic in how we use these funds.
Thanks. Could you spell out SSOS for folks?
Statewide System of Supports. Sorry, had to get my acronyms right.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Thank you, Karen. And the report from--
So my, my report's a little bit brief, because we also have the conversation about our MCAS scores, the first overview, looking at that. But a few highlights, that we have hired Matt Goulet, who's our help desk manager. We-- We, you folks approved a job description at the last meeting, and we were able to get a very qualified candidate who has already started working. And the goal of having the Help Desk Manager is because the IT department gets a very high number of tickets for assistance for all of our end-users, not just teachers, but office staff and administrators as well. And they were getting bottlenecked, because no one was able to quickly address things that were quickly addressable, and then helped to send things to the appropriate staff who needed to address more complicated things. So, Joel's goal with hiring the Help Desk Manager is really to be able to provide assistance as quickly as possible with the things that are able to be replied to quickly, instead of sort of bogging down the process when there was a complicated matter that required longer amounts of time. So, he's, he's moving along with that. Matt's only been with us, I don't know if it's two weeks yet, so, but he's right in there. So, Karen and I are interviewing for IA's, because the principals expressed that they would appreciate the help due to everything that they're trying to deal with onsite in the buildings. We're interviewing for substitute teachers and IA subs, and we still have some applicants coming, you know, applications coming in. Every one that comes in gets interviewed, and we talk with them about the opportunities available at all the buildings and see what their interests are compared to what our opportunities are. And some folks have come in looking for a sub-job and have ended up being a full-time IA or vice versa. So, we're very pleased with the people who have come in, and we're continuing to not just look at the applicants that come in proactively, but also to look at people who have applied previously for positions and to reach out and see if anyone is still looking to come in and work with us. But we've been pleased to hire a few folks just this week, so. We've also had Jake Waldsmith, our Transportation Coordinator, and Melissa Bednarski, our Nurse Leader. They just completed training to be trainers for CPI, which is our Crisis Prevention Institute. So, it's strategies for staff to de-escalate escalating situations and to respond in an appropriate pro-social way. So, now, they will be able to join David Hyde, who's also trained in district, to provide that training to our staff onsite. We'll be able to keep up better with the addition of new staff and to keep all of our staff refreshers done at a pace that works better for us, instead of trying to contract out with trainers or work with one person. So, we're pleased they were able to go for that. We're still offering vaccination clinics in collaboration with the Greenfield Health Department. They'll be held at the middle school on October 17th and at the high school on October 28th. Anyone who signed up for the high school one for sure, but double-check if you have signed up, because the provider that's working with the health department had to change, so now it's a new registration form that, that needs to be done. The flyers are now available. Melissa sent them to be put on the website and distributed today, so. The re-envisioning our school facilities or redistricting meetings, two of them have been held, one last night at the high school cafeteria and one prior, and we still have a few dates. The dates are on the website, along with a copy of the full Nezdek report and a summary. I created a summary document to use at the parent meetings, because it's easier to flip through two pages than to flip through 60 pages of the Nezdek report. So, all of those are online and accessible, and I'll continue to send reminders for the following dates, and then after the parent meetings are done, we'll summarize all of the feedback and then schedule meetings with staff at all the buildings to share the parent thoughts and questions, get staff thoughts and questions, and that will be presented to the committee for your thoughts and questions. But just a reminder for everybody, this is not a process that will be completed this year. It's going to take time to make sure that we get all the elements figured out, all the details ironed out, before any final decisions are made. Okay? And then strategic planning, Judy was here already. And then the data update. The one thing I want to say is that, you know, MCAS is one piece of data. We, we give it, because the State Department of Ed requires that we give it. They have to have an assessment system, so this is what we have. We use this in conjunction with all of the data points that Judy referenced. We do not believe MCAS is a complete reflection of the district or a complete reflection of any of our students. It's a piece of data, and we use it to garner information on a broad scale about what we can do, what areas we may need to address. And then each building, each school will be able to look at their data only to the point of being able to make decisions about instruction. You can dive so deeply into MCAS data that it, in my opinion, I think at some point, when you dig so deeply, it, it doesn't really remain helpful in terms of making programmatic curriculum or instructional change, so. But it's an important piece of data, and it's also used by the Department of Ed to determine our status in terms of needing support, and two of our schools do have federal designations, which I'll talk about. So, we need to pay attention to how we perform, because it does lead to identification, so. I want to share the student, individual student reports will be mailed out within the next seven calendar days to all the families, and I did actually send this presentation to the staff a couple hours ago, in case, just wanted it to go out in case anyone saw it before it was presented publicly, so. I am happy to do that if you folks are ready.
Yes. Do we want to take questions on the rest of your report first?
Whatever you would like to do.
Other than the MCAS update, are there questions from the school committee about any other pieces of... Member Martini, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this might be a silly question, but I just, just so that we all know, the vaccination clinics, can people walk in, or is it entirely appointment-oriented, and do they have to go to the district website to do that?
I believe Melissa did share that people can walk in.
Okay. All right. I just thought the public would like to know.
That's a good question.
I want to know, because I'm going to go use it, so.
Yeah. No, it's a good question. Thank you for bringing it up. Yeah.
All right. Great.
Secretary Extron, go ahead.
You said federal designations?
Yes, they're actually federal accountability designations.
I did not know that. Thank you.
It's a wonderfully exciting piece of information.
Member Johnson moves on. Go ahead.
How are the yonder pouches going?
I, I hear not much at this stage, so it seems like it's just status quo, but, you know, we can certainly take a poll as we get more into mid-year.
Silence is a message too.
Yeah. It's...
Did you say silence is a message too?
Yeah. I mean, if you're not, you're not getting a zillion complaints about it, apparently, or anything, so it seems to be working smoothly.
I was able to meet with one parent who had asked to talk about some things, and she seemed to be happy with the conversation, and then I believe the committee received one email that I replied to about some logistical questions with athletic practices, but the high school had made some changes to try to address those things, make it easier for parents to figure things out if practices were canceled and have a little bit more notice, but those are the only two things that have come to me since, since then.
Anyone else? Member Martini, go ahead.
You mentioned that we still have a number of IA positions open, which is mentioned every week in the fair and update by email. So, I know that there was a comment earlier about postings for IA's being general now as opposed to specific to school. Is that accurate, and if so, would you consider changing that?
What was happening that created some confusion is, we were posting specific to schools, that person, that posting would get no applicants, but an application out for another school would get, say, four applicants, and then the one, there was one hire, I'll make up schools for the sake of this very convoluted answer if I don't. So, if Discovery School posted for an IA but got no applicants, but Federal Street posted for one and got four applicants, what we were doing is then calling all the applicants from the Federal Street position to see if they wanted to interview at Discovery School. And if they did, then they had to go back into school spring and apply under the Discovery School posting, which is a lot of work, but if we, we are, we need to track, like, what position was vacated, what posting it was connected to, and what person was hired, so it, it's a logistical challenge. So, we post for instructional assistance, and then what we do is share all of the opportunities district-wide, so people can sort of pick and choose. As a matter of fact, I had someone I interviewed yesterday that I thought, from the cover letter and initial conversation, would be really interested in elementary, and that person said, wow, I'd love to work in that program at the high school. So, it's, it's logistically a little easier, prevents opening and closing a million different postings, and when we're going back into postings that are six months old, four months old, and pulling phone numbers out of those application lists, it's, you know, I guess at the end of the day, when that's how we're getting our applicants, it's, that's how we're getting our applicants. So, we're trying to make it as logistically simple as possible. We have had a few people interested in working in the district who've reached out to particular principals to say, oh, you know, my kids went there, my brother went there, whatever, and, you know, those principals are very, they're welcome to interview, or they're welcome to call us and say, please, interview this person, they have a connection here, so.
Okay. I wondered if you could, well, if you could speak to or let us know if you intend to speak to it during the budget part of the meeting in regards to the district's efforts to improve staff compensation, since that seems to be the major topic of interest tonight.
We are in negotiations currently.
So, you're not going to speak to that at all during this meeting?
You can't.
Confidential.
Okay. I just want folks to know whether they can expect to hear anything about that if they sit here for the rest of the evening.
We are, we are in negotiations currently.
Thank you.
You're all set? Member Martini?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? For the superintendent? Okay, so we'll go right into the MCAS?
Okay.
Yeah, please. And you're going to use...
No, I'm going to use my computer from here.
But if folks who are sitting over there want to be able to see it, they're going to need to move.
Thank you.
That's all I'm saying. If you are sitting over there and you want to see the presentation, you'll need to move in front of the screen.
Sure, you said that you were developing a folder. Yeah. Oh. Looking at it microscopically. I didn't intend for it to be mobile. So, okay, this presentation is really in two parts. One, it's a basic update of the information. I did not go into a deep dive in this presentation. We've had the information, I think, less than two weeks publicly available, and we have been looking at it and want to start the conversation at pieces that I think are important for the whole community to understand about where we are and things that we're doing to support our students and the district and changes that we're making. But the schools will use the data to do a little bit deeper of a look at their specific performance, but, so, but you'll see, I think, as we go. Okay. So, an overview of MCAS. So, as I said previously, MCAS is one data point. We use other things, such as MAP, our interim, our unit assessments, DIBELS, all of the things that we have, we use. And MCAS is giving us a broad picture of performance compared to the state and to ourselves year to year. And as I said already, it's the data, it's the data collection system that is used in part for accountability status. So, the first thing I'm pointing out, which I believe is the greatest area of opportunity, and will also have one of the greatest impacts, is improving our attendance. District-wide, our attendance is an area of need, and chronic absenteeism, which is defined as students missing more than 10% of the days, so if you miss more than 18 days in a school year, you're considered chronically absent, and, excuse me, there is no distinction between excused or inexcused. From the Department of Education's perspective, students who are not in school are missing their educational opportunity. We all know, of course, there are times when students are sick and really can't come to school, have doctor's appointments, have other things that have to be done generally during the times when students are in school, but really trying to minimize any other time outside of school and even minimize doctor's appointments, things like that during school can have a substantial impact. So, you can see our students by subgroup as identified by the Department of Education, and the significant instances or percentages of students in those subgroups that are identified as chronically absent. Huge, huge area of need. So, there are also some high school-specific indicators that we look at, and so, one of them is the dropout rate, which did increase. Now, keep in mind, the MCAS performance scores are for 2022, the dropout rate statistic is for 2021. So, the dropouts increased for students with disabilities, English learners, Hispanic, multirace students, or, but it decreased for our students who are students of color, that identified as black for MCAS data collection. The four-year graduation rate decreased for all of our students and for all subgroups, except for the small subgroup identified as multirace. So, all of our graduation, four-year graduation rates decreased, but what they describe as our extended engagement rate, which is, I think we might know it more like our six-year graduation rate, students who didn't acquire enough credits in four years to graduate but continue and ultimately graduate, had substantial increases, especially for some of the students identified in subgroups. So, that's, that was a real positive, that they might not have hit their credit count in the four-year time, but they did stay and continue to work, and we had a very nice uptick for the graduation, six-year graduation rate. And then the percentage of students who complete advanced coursework at our high schools was pretty static, but our English language learners and black students increased fairly significantly between 2019 and 2022. So, I can't speak to why, it's just an is. So, it is just an objective fact, you know, that would be something at our high school level, for our guidance counselors to work with students to talk about, like, who's taking advanced coursework and, and staying in it, but.
Okay. Can I, can I interrupt briefly? So, 2021, I think it might be important to share this. 2021 is the year when we were primarily not in the schools, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to sort of put that in perspective for people.
I'm trying to get my dates back.
Yeah. It's like 2020...
2020, we began the remote school... Twenty, 2020, we began the remote schooling in April of 2020. And it went until April of 2021, I believe. It, it was April 5, 2021, it will be burned in my brain, is when we came back from remote school.
Okay. Okay, so this is the five-year trend for English Language Arts from grades three through eight district-wide. I think the important part to note is that the students who are exceeding, meeting or exceeding, the, the blue and dark blue at the top is decreasing. Our students who are partially meeting is a fairly substantial chunk of our tested students. And then we do have a, a number of students that are not meeting the performance expectations. In grades three through eight, we had a 16% decline in the percentage of students who were proficient from the prior year of testing. And that's 25% below the state. However, our growth percentile, which means how much students are growing compared to students who scored the same scaled score the year prior. So, see if we can make that easier. So to use myself, and these aren't real numbers, it's just for the sake of the description. If I scored a 300 last year, but I score, and, and five of my friends scored 300s, but I move up to a 400 the year after, and my other four friends don't move up that high, my growth percentile in the second year will be higher because I moved more than the other students who tested, performed the same way I did. So you're comparing yourself, that way you're not, excuse me, comparing the growth of a student who may struggle academically with the growth of a student who is a gifted student. You're comparing how students grow them against similar performing students. So our growth percentile for grades three through eight in English Language Arts grew, improved seven points from the prior tested school year. It's still below state average, but that's a place where we made movement. So we did help our students grow in English Language Arts. So that's, that is positive. Okay, I know the graphs, there's nothing better than MCAS graphs to. But I think the illustration is, is the biggest piece, that we have students, we have a fairly large chunk of students who are close to where we want them to be. And we did make movement in our growth. And that's, that's an important aspect. You know, their finite performance, their score may not be what we want. But if we continue to help our students move, then that's a real, that's a benefit to them and I believe shows that we're making the right changes. Okay, good on this before I go backward, forwards? Okay. Math, same thing. So again, we have a very large percentage of our students who are partially meeting the state, the expectation for math in grades three through eight. It is, we improved 3% of our students in proficient from the prior tested year. But as you can see, we are still significantly below, 25% below compared to the state for students who are proficient in this grade band. Again, our average growth percentile, student growth percentile, you'd want it to be over 50, but over 40 is, is moving to the average. So a 40 SGP is, is not a bad place to be. We improved 17 points compared to the prior year. And we're 10% below in the state. But 17-point improvement in student growth is, again, it's something that's positive movement. Okay? Anything on this before we go? Okay. So now we look at similar for grade 10. Yep, sorry, I've been looking at it on the screen where I can't see when I have it in front of me. So proficiency, we increased 2% in the numbers of students who are proficient. And we are about even with the state on that, which I would love if we were performing above the state. But this is an area where I would describe that we are relatively stronger than with our ELA instruction, even though we still want more students to move into that proficiency. 40% of the students are proficient. So, and a 44 SGP student growth percentile compared to the year prior, we moved up 11 and only six points below the state. So 10th grade math certainly comparably is an area of strength. It's ELA, wait till you see the math. So I apologize, this was the ELA. All my points still stand, an area of strength, relatively speaking. Okay? Math. Somewhat consistent profile. So we had a little bit of a dip in the percentage of students at proficiency for 10th grade math over the last year, but we are still on par with the state performance. But the growth percentile here, 58.8 is, that is above average, which again, you know, 50 would be average. So we're moving close to 60, which is a wonderful SGP. And 31 points that have increased. So a lot of movement for our students in this grade for math. And compared to the state, nine points up. So again, relative area of strength. Of course, we all want many more students to be at or above proficiency, but that student growth percentile is extremely encouraging to me. Okay, questions on this part? Okay. So looking at all of those numbers, again, they were global. I want you to understand and the community to understand that we have some relative strengths and relative areas of need. Administratively, we really believe that our academic performance will improve as our attendance improves. The students are not going to gain if they're not in front of their teachers. So Federal Street has the federal designation of targeted support and improvement, which is the same that it had last, last time. And Greenfield Middle School now has the designation of comprehensive support and improvement. What that, that designation is given to schools in the lowest 5% of Title I schools in the state. So based on the test scores from last year, that's where middle school fell. So obviously, an area where we have substantial work to do on our academic programming. Last year, Greenfield Middle had targeted support and improvement. These two schools having designations are what led us to have access to the TAG grant. The designations are newly out, so I am waiting to hear from our SSOS friends about what additional resources we may have. I don't know any, I don't know that yet. But they were definitely waiting to see what happened in terms of designations. So one thing that was shared with superintendents when we met virtually with Rob Curtin of DESI, who does a lot of the accountability work, is he spoke to the point that DESI can use this data set as the new baseline for future accountability. So they can start us where we are now and look at our growth from here. So I'm hoping that that will be the case, that it will be a will and not a may. So, and DESI has to give that federal designations because we, Massachusetts Department of Ed, applied for a waiver for accountability during the pandemic. And it was granted and as one of the conditions for granting that waiver, now Massachusetts needs to use the federal designations for schools that are hitting particular performance areas. So that, that's why the federal designation, Susan. Okay. So what do we do? This is the summary, what do we know? Attendance is a priority area. Growth in ELA is increasing, we're not up to pre-pandemic levels, and we definitely need to focus on our students who are high need. High need is a subgroup that includes students who are English language learners, have identified disabilities, or qualify for free and reduced lunch. So it's a large proportion of our students. The Greenfield schools need to improve growth for students in grades three through 10 in math, but with a significant focus on the middle school. And again, at the middle school for math growth, it's especially students who are identified as high need. And then growth for math has increased over pre-pandemic levels, notably at Federal Street, Newton, and the high school. So an absolute area to celebrate that they've moved students past where they were prior to the pandemic. So I think that's something that we should be proud of there. Okay, any questions on this part? Okay, Elizabeth, anything before I click? I know, it's helpful. Yeah, it's helpful to have the summary, I think, boiled down, so. And I can send this out to all of you. Yep?
You know, I do want, because having been on the school committee for as long as I've been, there's, there's always sort of been this skating along the edge of grades and scores and, and attendance and things like that. And, and I, and I do believe this, it's, it's not having those designations means you're a person or a school struggling alone. Having those designations means that there's a team that comes in to support you and help you to figure it out. So while there may be people who are sort of, I don't, I don't have a knee-jerk reaction of, oh, my God, what are we doing? It's also, we're not alone in this anymore and there are eyes on us and there are, there are grants that are going to become available and there are other opportunities that will come along because we are, we do have this designation. And so it's, it really is a double-edged sword.
And having the identification isn't just one year of scores below where they would be. It's, you know, this is a cumulative effect. And so we will, it may take some time to come back in the other direction. But I think we know what we need to do. The staff is already doing a lot of what needs to be done to get our kids moving in, in a different direction. So, and we will have assistance. I'm hoping there are additional grant funds with the new designation, I don't know, but I certainly hope so. But the TAG grant now being able to be used at the district level gives every school an opportunity to establish an instructional leadership team, which is a really valuable resource for administration in every building.
Well, and if we had a sudden bounce, that everything suddenly became positive, it would be a false recording. Because things don't happen that fast, time passes.
Want to have it sustained.
Right, exactly.
I would want to have it sustained, but I would still celebrate the short-term bounce.
But, you know, I, I.
Be happy for that year, yes, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect it to happen next week, it's gonna take time.
It will take.
As everything does.
And I think one thing to know too is that MCAS is a summative assessment. So the things that our teachers are teaching in classrooms right now, double-digit multiplication as the first example. Students learning it at the classroom level with supports and their familiar materials and all of that can do extremely well and, and learn it and be able to demonstrate that they learn it. But it's a compilation of a lot of different skills to take it and utilize it on a standardized test in a very formal setting. And so it takes time, I guess is my point. Just because students may not perform that well on this test, it doesn't mean that the grades or the feedback they're getting in classrooms is not representing their learning. It does represent their learning, they're very different types of assessments. So I just want to keep that in mind again. That's why we use multiple data points to talk about how students are doing with their learning. Okay, so now we know what we know. And, okay, I was thinking my clicking wasn't working. So now what do we do with it? You're gonna go back.
I'm sorry, Christine.
Okay.
Are you gonna, did you have any other slides that pertain specifically to the MCAS data? Like where you're going, okay. So I do have a couple of questions or, and comments.
I'm probably gonna need to go back because I was not doing a deep, deep dive for this presentation, but if you want to.
Nothing that requires a super deep dive. I just had a couple of thoughts. So I, I hear us sort of talking about pre-pandemic levels a lot. And, and I appreciate also positive data related to state comparisons. That being said, as a parent, our pre-pandemic levels of student achievement were not good.
No.
And for me, looking at us compared to the state, it just doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't mean a lot to me or feel reassuring because we might be known as the education state, but the fact is Massachusetts has over 300 elementary schools right now that are getting less than half of their students to reading proficiently. So I want to be better, a lot better than the rest of the state. I wanted to just express how shocking it is to see a level of proficiency in ELA for students in three to eight at only 16% because that means we have a huge supermajority of students who are not getting to that point by the end of middle school, never mind by the third grade. And that's really kind of scary because we know that students who don't read proficiently by the end of third grade, three-quarters of them never catch up. So that's, that should be really scary to everybody at this table and, and everybody in GPS. I wanted to also comment about a bit of the data that was not part of this, but specifically about students with disabilities. I have combed through the MCAS data prior to this meeting. And I think people really need to put a big, huge red alarm bell and light on the fact that we are basically demonstrating a universal failure rate for students with disabilities in Greenfield Public Schools. And for any parent of a child with a disability, with a child in this district, it's absolutely terrifying. So I appreciate it's just MCAS, but MCAS has a big impact on a kid's life. And I just wanted to say those things out loud.
No, I appreciate it and I, I do not disagree with you in any way. But as I said when I started, we've had this data probably less than two weeks. And there's going to be a lot more data analysis done at the school levels, at the district level, to dig a little bit deeper. We did look at how our subgroups were performing and they're, we're not where we should be. The district was not performing well based on MCAS prior to the pandemic. And the piece that I am pleased about is where we were able to move past the pre-pandemic level because that shows a, a nice chunk of growth. And that's where we want to focus, is make sure we're moving our students. But we've not been secret, this committee has not been secret administratively, we've not been secret about the needs that we have and how much work has to be done. So I think this is bearing out what we knew. And I'm, I am not surprised, I was somewhat dejected by some of it. But we can make change, we're already making change, which is what I'm gonna speak to next. And I know that the staff, we have incredibly dedicated, talented staff in this district. And they want. And they want all of the students to perform absolutely as best as they can in every way, and to be ready to leave us employable, or ready for college, or ready for the service, whatever they want to do. So, change is already happening, which I'm gonna show you, because we know this isn't okay.
One more question. As you have a little bit more time to digest data, like you were saying, will you bring back those insights to the committee at some future date?
Yes, at some future date, I will. I want to give the staff time to analyze at the building levels and for us to analyze, looking at students who are in interventions and what their growth is looking like. Students who are in, receiving special ed services, English learners, and look a little bit more deeply, so I won't promise it will be November. But yes, I will bring more data back.
That would be great. And when you do that, would you be able to fill out the picture a little bit more about student outcomes than just MCAS? Could you weave the other forms of data that we have into that to give us a fuller, better picture?
If our data administration cycle is done, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If we finished a loop of something, then yes, we can speak to that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem. Okay. So, now we move on to the, what have we been doing and what are we gonna do? If everybody's good to go. Okay.
So, we have talked previously, how can we...
I just discovered I was not clicking my mousepad. I was turning the volume on and off on the microphone. That is why the slide does not advance. Our technology director is shaking his head at home. So, what we have talked about in the past is the mass-tiered system of support. We've referenced the triangle many times. And so, this is the graphic representation of our world. And I'll review what we've talked about before. So tier one, the bottom, is the biggest, because that's where most of our students should be meeting their goals. That's the core instructional program, core social-emotional support. So things like our SEL curriculum that I've talked about, the academics. That's the adoption of a high-quality instructional resource, like CKLA, for an example. So when those things are in place for all students across the board, we would look to have 80% of our students meeting their instructional goals with that support. Then we have students who require some additional support or services to meet those needs. And those students can access services identified as tier two. It's a little bit smaller of a group, maybe a little bit longer of time, little bit more targeted support. So to use our CKLA, if a student demonstrates that maybe they don't really understand... Plurals, that may not be a thing. But, you know, that they're struggling with something particular that's keeping them from advancing. Better example, they don't understand character development in literature. So they can get additional support from a teacher in learning how to figure out character support. And then, the goal is for them to not need that support anymore and go back and meet all of their goals in the core instruction. Students who continue to need additional support, even more intensive for just a few students, access services in tier three. Those are extremely small group, might be one-to-one, much more intensive. It might be daily, longer period of time. This is all still general education, by the way. So our math and reading tutors are a great example of supports for students who could be in tier two or three. So when we talk about services that are being developed, programs that are being developed, and I do this, this is the graphic that we're looking at, okay? Putting that away. All right, so first, some of the work that you folks are doing are helping to establish a strong tier one. So you're doing the strategic planning. We're all doing the strategic planning. But as Dr. Hul said, that helps guide the work that's happening and helps to set priorities for the budget, for resource allocation. So you are creating your belief system about what we should be doing for our kids. So that's huge, tier one. The work of re-envisioning our school facilities or redistricting is also tier one, because you want to establish a structure that allows all of our students to access high-quality resources. And that process is looking to figure out what is the best way for that to happen. So, this is tier one. Oh, oops. Go back. Okay, so I apologize for the small font. So tier one, these are things we've already done. We've implemented a consistent English language arts resource, K through seven. Karen's been talking about CKLA for a year. It's being used. We see it being used. We have implemented a consistent math resource, K through five, and then another six, seven. We have implemented an instructional resource at our early childhood center. We have a social-emotional learning curriculum, preschool through grade 12, that is being done. I have seen it happening in classrooms where teachers are delivering those lessons. It's not perfect, but it's there and able to be revised to meet student and staff needs. We have identified consistent assessments that we're talking about. We've established collaborative time at all grade levels, K through 12, which is new and allows teachers to talk about our student data. And we have, between Karen and Joel and the intervention staff, we have created a data collection tool, so that most of the data's in one place, which is huge. The amount of time it takes for educators to sift through all of the millions of pieces of data is incredible. So to have it in one place is amazingly helpful. What we're going to do this upcoming year, as Karen talked about, identify and research high-quality math resources for grade eight and the high school. We're going to establish a data review process to be used district-wide to look at classroom-grade, building, and district-level data. We're going to share and update the data collection tool, identify highest areas of need from the data, and then start developing ways to address those needs. Ensure we visit classrooms to, oh, ensure, sorry, redundancy, to make sure that administrators are aware of and can help do what teachers and students need to have the support that they need. And then, begin replacement of technology to support instruction. We've talked about our technology needs many times. And when it is a universally accessed tool, we need to make sure that we give students and teachers the tools they need. When everything is available web-based, a lot of it is available web-based. So we need to make sure that we do that. So this is all tier one. We're doing these things because they've not been in place. Any questions on this one? I'm gonna do, okay. So tier two. So now we're moving into the yellow, students who need a little bit of additional support. As Kate referenced earlier, our Director of Behavioral Services has started doing some work, some collaboration with administrators, family meetings, outreach to community agencies. We have increased outreach with our Equity and Community Connections Coordinator, or Glenn, as is much easier to say. So Glenn has been meeting with families and community agencies and students and teachers. We have used data to identify students for intervention, and we use data to identify students for last summer's summer school programs. And we have identified the ELA intervention resource for use at the elementary. And what we're going to do for tier two, increase outreach for struggling students with a focus on attendance. Administratively, we've changed how we are reaching out, the frequency of our outreach, so that we're trying to have a more personal connection with families to see what resources they need that we may be able to help with, and to help them access services in the community that might be available. And it's all meant to help encourage the students to come in and be available for learning. We will identify additional intervention needs and resources, because we're going to see broad strokes of where students are not doing well as we begin to get into the data. We need to evaluate data for students receiving tier-two supports, because we want to make sure that what we're doing is meeting the needs that they present. So not only are we looking at building our district data to see where we need interventions, we then need to keep monitoring the students who are receiving the interventions to make sure that they're working for those students. Okay? I know it's long, but it's good stuff. All right, tier three. This is the top of the triangle, the red, the highest priority students. Approximately 5% of our student population statistically would be students receiving tier three. So our Director of Behavioral Services works with our special programs, with staff and families, does direct consultation, support with the staff, family meetings, community supports. We have provided one-to-one and family supports with Glenn. We have provided training for special education staff in a literacy program. Prior, we've talked about, that was the Lynda Moot Bell. And we provide counseling services for students who require individual or small-group counseling with our district staff. We have a fairly significant amount of qualified social workers in this district. We are very fortunate, and they work with a lot of our students. So what we will do this year for tier three is continue to work on our staffing needs, because our gaps in staff are primarily our instructional assistants, and those instructional assistants primarily are working with our students with highest need. We will evaluate current programming and identify needs based on data. So Kate, that goes to your question about our special education programs. And we will continue to build on the work, the collaborative relationships we're creating with community partners for student services. Unfortunately, many of the community agencies that Greenfield has are also struggling with staffing. So we're having outreach and making connections, but they are also looking for people to provide direct service for kids. So it's very challenging. Okay, anything here? Kate?
So, tier three is still in general education, but you've included the addition of Lynda Moot Bell in special education here under tier three. So can you clarify that for me?
I guess I should have said tier three plus. There are models of the RTI, Response to Intervention, that include special education in tier three. I personally don't, I consider all three tiers to be general education supports. In Greenfield, we are building tiers of support. So where our, tiers are not as robust as they will be at some point. So at this stage, you know, students who are struggling with reading, yes, we need to have trained special education staff. I also consider that the training for our special education staff will be extremely beneficial for us to meet the needs that we have now to screen our students twice yearly for dyslexia. And the interpretation of that data and working with our literacy intervention staff to identify students who are at high risk is something that we'll need to be collaborative about, so... Thank, sure. I think Glenn was first, sorry.
I'm not even paying attention. Be nice about it, whoever was hers.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Can you describe where we are with the tiers now and what it will look like when we are where we want to be with the tiers? You were just kind of saying that we're not very clear on our tiers.
Okay, so right now, with the green, the foundation work that we need to have in place, this is where, when I interviewed for this position, the folks on the interview committee talked about, how do you feel about a consistent instructional approach across the elementary? Like, that's what you folks were looking for, stronger tier one. So when you have consistency, you have students moving into the next grade levels with a common set of skills that they should have attained. You have common instructional strategies that we can lean on to help support students who may be struggling, needed additional support. And we're ensuring that the resources that our staff have available to them have been vetted and are deemed to be high-quality. So that's a very important thing. Right now, we have a lot of services. So we are, we currently in Greenfield are very heavy on supporting students in tiers two and three. So our triangle's almost like, not a triangle. It's almost like a rectangle or a, yes, exactly, thank you. A little bit more like an hourglass. So we're trying to add additional supports at the base, like our social-emotional learning curriculum. I know some, for some students, it might be very elementary work that we're doing at that stage, talking about your, you know, your own assets, talking about how do you make friends. For some people, that's very basic. But for others, it's a skill set they either don't have very strongly or sort of lost when they were home for remote learning. So if we get everybody sort of on the same page and expecting the same from their friends as they expect of themselves, that will strengthen. And then, hopefully, over time, we have less students who have noticeable or struggling behaviors, because they've gotten a very clear foundation of, this is how we act in school. These are kind words that we use instead of hitting, to use a very basic example. Same with instruction. If we have high-quality materials and we have a good assessment system in place, we're able to identify students who are struggling well before we're talking about a special education referral. We're able to provide interventions through our reading and math folks, and then try to fill the gaps that we identify. And then students don't need those services anymore. Now they're back to flourishing in the general curriculum. So we're not quite a clean pyramid yet. Does that help you? Okay.
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 So I guess, and maybe you just answered it, and I'm gonna put my parent hat on for a minute while I ask you those questions, which I know isn't necessarily kosher for us to do, but I'm gonna do it anyway. And I don't think I can say that. So Cameron, my daughter, is 17, and she regularly comes home and is in tears telling me that she doesn't have any friends. And so, she's 17 years old, and she's always gone to school in this district. Where is it within this? Because she really, it does a number on her. And so, where is it sort of, would those soft skills fall? Because that's not data. I mean, it's not, you're not saying, there's not a test that says, do you have friends? Circle yes or no, unless I'm sort of mistaken. And so, where are those? And I know that this is a large enough challenge that sort of this question may not fit properly, and, but I'm just, I'm curious where that sort of falls.
So, I will tell you, I've never met a teacher who doesn't know exactly in their class who's friends with who and who needs to be connected with other students so that they can make groups. So they're very attuned to that and often will highlight that for our counseling staff to say, this child's struggling to make friends, maybe we can get him a lunch buddy. We can have them paired up to do work, things along those lines. So, the social-emotional learning curriculum also can help with that, because we, the month of September is basically get to know you, get to know each other in the classroom, what are your strengths? What do you want to talk to each other about? You two both like skiing, so you go have a conversation. It's to try and create relationships. But at some point, if there are challenges, I'm not speaking about your child, I'm speaking in a generality. If you begin to see challenges where a student has a hard time initiating, doesn't use good language, doesn't recognize facial cues, doesn't recognize emotion, or doesn't display emotion in a pro-social way, then we have our counseling staff that can do some intervention and try to teach those skills. And sometimes those challenges are associated with certain disabilities. And then it just requires more intensive supports to learn those things. So that can be addressed across the continuum, or the triangle. Okay? Okay. Yes?
So, I, we've talked a little bit about this, I think, a few months ago, but it sounds like we have a certain number of students in special education who are really kind of instructional casualties and did not necessarily need to be there. And improving our Tier One and our interventions will hopefully help that not happen.
So, I, I can't speak to who is currently identified as a child with disabilities in terms of the genesis of their learning needs. But what I can speak to in a general sense is that, you know, the premise of, of RTI is to, in fact, intervene early and provide targeted support so that learning gaps can be filled, instead of having students who have one gap that then starts to affect their ability to conceptualize the next piece of learning. So, if you never learn your times tables, you're not doing trigonometry or whatever the high-level math is that requires multiplication, which I did not take. So, but if you start with a gap that we're never able to identify and help to close, at some point, it does become a significantly discrepant skill set for you. And if that's a literacy skill that you don't develop early, it is extremely pervasive in all learning. So, the goal is certainly to prevent the identification of students as disabled if they have a gap that could have been addressed with some intervention.
Right. So, I want us to do that, and this is about the most encouraging thing I've seen in a long time towards that end. So, I'm very excited about this, and thank you. That being said, I just wanted to be really clear, especially for parents out there, if you have a reason to be concerned that your child has a disability that hasn't been identified, that the use of tiered supports like this in school is not a reason to delay evaluation and identification of a child with a disability.
Parents can ask for an evaluation at any time, as can staff. We can also reach out if we're concerned. So, I would say, if a parent is concerned, we're still going to move through the interventions, but as you said, the evaluation can happen at any point.
Sometimes, parents hear from schools that, well, your child hasn't been in an RTI Tier Two long enough or Tier Three long enough if they're not considering that part of special education or something like that. And that's, that is not accurate. If you, this is not for the purpose of delaying or denying services to students who need them in special education. So, I just want folks to understand that this is not.
It's not to do that, but also let me add, and then we probably have gone off on a very specific tangent, but also let me add that determining that an intervention is not effective too quickly can be, I mean, that can happen if a student has not had the opportunity, either through, they just got signed up for the intervention, or their attendance was challenging during that period of time, then the staff working with them may not be able to say whether the intervention was or was not effective. So, that's a caution that we might have. I don't want to say, we will never say the words, your child has not really had the opportunity to access this intervention, but that doesn't mean a parent can't make a referral for testing at any time. That's right. So, we're on the same page, but are you good to turn it?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So, summary, our continued work. Continue to focus work for students with attendance concerns. Continued engagement with counseling staff and intervention staff for struggling students. Focus on engagement with outside agencies to support attendance and mental health supports for students. Continue to implement high-quality instructional materials district-wide. Implement a data review cycle to monitor progress at the student class, grade, and district-wide levels, and evaluate and support specialized programs for students with disabilities and English learners.
Can you talk more about what effective practices are to address attendance concerns and what we're trying and what we are going to try?
I'll tell you what we're trying, and later, I'll tell you if it's effective. In truth, you know, we're, we're going to start with some basics and then monitor how our attendance goes. So, things that we've already done, we have increased the outreach. Now, we're doing it at different levels. We, we have to send letters out when students miss five days, seven days, 10 days, 15 days. So, we still continue to do that. What we're going to start doing is sending out the Community Action Flyer with all of those, because I don't think parents realize that Community Action can provide some resources to them outside of the school to help support students who are struggling to come to school. We are, we've changed the wording on some of our letters, as simple as that seems. Prior letters said, you need to call us to schedule an appointment to talk about attendance. Now, the letters say, we're going to call you to schedule a time to talk about attendance. We are doing phone calls at particular intervals to outreach with families. We're scheduling meetings before we were previously. It can be on the phone, it can be in person, however it's agreeable to a family, but we're, we're scheduling meetings to get them into school to see if we can help with resources. We have developed procedures for home visits. Don, our Director of Behavioral Services, and Glenn collaborated, pulled resources that they've previously used. We have resources. What we're working on are a little bit of the logistics, but we do, we're building the process to offer home visits to families. We're looking to implement a second run late bus for our middle school, high school. Jake and I are working on the logistics of that, like, who do we know, how do we know who we pick up, kind of a thing. But some of our students don't have transportation, and they live way too far to walk to school. So, if you're five minutes late.
And that's a morning late bus, not an after-school late bus.
Correct. It's a morning late bus to do a second run for students who may need to get picked up. We're starting with the high school because credit, you know, we want to get our kids out of high school in four years and successful and ready to move on to the next thing. So, credits become impacted with attendance at the high school level, and we'd like to get ahead of that. Other things we're doing to try to address secondary attendance issues, we continue to work with the Beacon Program to try to get alternatives for students who.
What, secondary attendance?
High school, not attendance after. High school attendance, we're having students, we still support work with the Beacon Program, the high school, that's been very successful in our estimation. We're also working with families of students to say, do, do you need to be in a different place? Sometimes, they're really going to thrive in a place that meets their needs better. We are working, will be working with GCC to support some school-to-career work so that students who maybe want to be in a trade or want to move into a GCC program, that we've done what we can do to prep them to easily transition into that type of support. So, if high school students see the point, they may be able to deal with us for a little bit while we get them ready to move into the trade that they'd like to go into. So, across the board, trying to do a variety of things. And we'll, like I said, we'll see. Okay, that might be, oh, that's the last slide. Thank goodness. I thought it was short.
It wasn't bad. Thank you. How about, oh, take me off the screen.
I know. Shut it down.
How, how, how about, that is so distracting. Other questions or comments about the MCAS presentation from the school committee for the superintendent? Please, Member Denise, go ahead. Thank you.
I just had a comment. I wanted to thank Christine for her very wonderful presentation, which you certainly do excel at, and I commend you, and it's wonderful to read it, concerning but wonderful. And thank you very much for that.
Sure.
I look forward to revisiting it and seeing how the implementation goes of all of this.
We will.
Any other last comments? Yeah, Member Johnson, go ahead.
I'll just second that. I think this is the first time I've had a presentation on MCAS since I've been on the school committee, and we really needed it. And the, the way you think about things is very appreciated and strategic. Thank you.
Good. I hope that it is something that is functional. I mean, we can go, like, educators can go really scary deep in the rabbit hole, so I didn't think, I mean, this was long enough, but I didn't think you wanted to get real deep into the item analysis for every question, so. But if you think of anything that you think I could have touched on that I missed, please feel free to reach out.
Anything else? The reports from the school committee? I do not have a chair's report. We have, we have done enough tonight. Subcommittee reports, though, I think there are a few. Can we start with Vice Chair Wall and any report you might have from reimagining the facilities?
I did, I missed the first one, which I understand only two people attended, but last night, we had a meeting at the high school, and there were 13 people there, and we had a lively discussion and really drilled down on what our options are. So, that was very enlightening to, to have such a good discussion. And, and tomorrow, we go to Lighten Woods at 1:00, and we will start again with a discussion from the beginning to, to see what the people there think. So, that is the process that we're going to use. Please keep up with coming, you know, come if you have anything you want to say to us. We are open to every idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for the, that committee, which is, yeah, please, Mayor Waiter-Garnett, go ahead.
I just wondered, I, I realized, I don't know what to say, there are things you want to do. Do you have a flavor of what people are interested in yet or no?
So far, the, out of the five options that are available, people have begun to recognize that Options One and Two are really the only ones that are really what are viable, but that does not stop anybody who has a better idea from bringing it to us. I'm not cutting off discussion. But if we go with Option One, that will put the grades, one in kindergarten in one in the school, two in three in a school, and four and five in a school, which will accomplish bringing the fifth grade out of the middle school. If we go with redistricting, that will eliminate the ability to move the fifth grade from the middle school into the elementary schools, but it will keep children in the neighborhoods. We also would like to move the eighth grade under Option One into the middle school to give more room in the high school for teaching things like shop and, and that, you know, things that are not ordinary things that you would think of in the high school. So, you know, again, we want to hear from everybody. There are pluses and minuses to everything, and, you know, we just would like to have input from the entire community.
Yes.
Please.
I just wanted to add that one thing that came out yesterday is, you know, it's called re-envisioning our school facilities, and it certainly is about the facilities, but it's also very much about student outcomes. And I think many of us who are on the, on, working on this really care about it because of the equity issues involved. And so, don't be scared off from coming because of acronyms or because it seems like it's about facilities. It's really about the students and, and how to create the community in our schools that will facilitate student learning.
Thank you, Glenn. Any other comments or questions? And Member Denise, yeah, go ahead. She's, Member Denise is also on the, the committee.
I just wanted to reiterate, I said it yesterday, but I wanted the public to know that these meetings are really relaxed. They're not this style. So, so when you come, be prepared to just really have a candid conversation and to really bring forth your ideas and not to feel pressured in any way or that it's formal. This is really more of like a couch chit-chat, and that really enables people to get their feelings out and their thoughts out. And so, don't be afraid to come. Don't think that it's formal.
Thank you all. Member Martini, go ahead.
And transportation is still available to?
We just would need, no, I'm not clicking this button. We just would need people to call my office ahead of time so that we make sure we have a driver and a bus available.
Okay.
But yes, if, if it's the one that will be at Federal Street. So, we did neighborhood-based meetings with the vision that that would be easier for families who were close to those neighborhoods. Certainly, if someone would like transportation to Lighten Woods, I can do my best. We're, we're using our vans for the transportation, and I would have to check, but.
So, if somebody can't attend the meeting that is in their neighborhood or closest to them but would like to attend another one, please call.
Yes.
Superintendent's office.
Absolutely. And we will work on transportation.
Anything else on that one? Thank you all. And is there a budget update of any sort?
We have a meeting pending.
Meeting pending, okay. We'll do, we'll do that, we'll do budget update quick after this.
Yeah.
And, yeah, these are subcommittee reports. And then, Member Denise, do you have anything from the collaborative that you want to talk about?
Do you want me to talk about it? I mean, it's not on the agenda, but we will maybe have to vote on it.
It's totally fine to talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Please do.
It's a very quick thing, but the collaborative has some COVID money sitting around, and they have a building that they own in North Hampton, Free &amp; Clear, but they need to make improvements on it. They need to, I think, replace the roof and a few other things. So, in order to do that, they would like two-thirds of the school committees that they work with to vote on allowing them to make an account, not talking about what exactly they're going to do with the money or getting into the weeds of it, just saying, it's okay to make an account and put this money in it and use it to fix your building. So, I'm not sure if they've reached their majority or not, but they may have because they didn't send out a reminder about the vote, which they said that they would. So, that's really all it is. And I sent you the piece of paper that lists the details of that.
Yep.
It's not to exceed $5 million, but they'd like to use that money, and it doesn't affect any of the student services that they offer or the amount that they charge for that.
Thank you. So, that's something that may be upcoming for us to have to vote on, which is fine. And if we, yeah, if we have a special meeting at some point in October, we can do it then, certainly. And then, if we don't, we could do it at the November meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that. Anything else from the collaborative?
Nope.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, policy, please. Member Johnson moves on.
We haven't had a meeting since our last, so we're.
Thank you.
Scheduled for November to have a evening meeting, particularly on the cellphone policy.
Great, thank you. And we do have a first read of a policy section tonight. Any other, did I miss anything for subcommittees? I don't think I did. Okay, great. And so, we'll do a quick budget update. Mr. Pickett was not able to be with us tonight, but you have all of the budget materials in the packet, and certainly, we can have any questions that either the superintendent or ASKP can answer, or if not, we can get them to Andy, and he can answer them. Are there any budget questions or discussion items? I'm not hearing any. Do you have an update of any sort?
I have a few brief.
Sure, please.
Highlights. One of the things that I know Andy had talked about was that with all the staffing changes between the end of, well, between.
between the end of, well, between when the budget was voted and now, what we need to do is make those adjustments to reflect accurately in the FY '23 budget. And we are just about done doing that. It is a very tedious process to make sure that we know who has left, who's been replaced by whom, and we have to work around the payroll schedule. So Loretta is unavailable for chunks of time so that she can do our payroll. And I know everyone wants her to be able to do the payroll. So we're in the final stage of finishing up the staffing, so then I expect that information to be available by the subcommittee meeting. And so, right now, what's happening is the amounts allocated are reflective of the budget that was voted by city council for the schools. So the other thing that's happening, because all of our grants have not been awarded or entered in at this stage, almost everything is being charged to the local, so you're going to see a little deficit. I know the mayor does not care to see the deficits, but that will be addressed when our grant funds are loaded and expenses are reclassed into the appropriate grants. And then revolving accounts, at this time in the fiscal year, we're running a little on the lower end of the revenue, but we expect to catch up as the year progresses. So it's still not a completely tightened-up package.
Sure.
But we're getting there.
Thank you. All right, and I think it's safe to move on. I didn't hear questions before. I'm not seeing anyone signaling me now. So we're into the superintendent evaluation. There is a stapled-together packet of materials about the evaluation, and I want to, I just want to introduce it and kind of frame it a little bit. I will say, very candidly, that this has been a terrible process overall for many layered reasons. And I want to come out right away and say, I own any and all missteps that I made in the process. This is my first time doing it from start to finish. And as we all, I think, have experienced, the materials and the tool are not intuitive, they're not easy to use. And some of, because of that, and because it was my first time, some of the missteps that I learned of, that I had done in tabulating and some, and doing the summative piece, I only learned of yesterday and today. And that is why, you may have noticed, there were multiple iterations of what was sent to the school committee for this evening. And for that, I apologize. I really am doing the best I can to make sure we're doing what is consistent with what's expected in an evaluation process. The training that we had from Dr. Hool, which was a little more than a year ago, the binder that she put together for all of us, those are really good resources, but they're not enough. I've reached out to MASCE. I've reached out with assistance to other superintendents and school committees to identify what are practices in other districts. And I've learned a lot in the last 48 hours that I probably should have assumed I needed to know earlier, and I did not. And what I would say overall about the process and the tool is that the instrument they provide for an individual member to make their evaluation and for me to do the summative evaluation assumes way too much of the person using the tool. It assumes you understand a lot of vocabulary that Desi uses that we don't use in normal everyday life. And the larger piece, I think, is that the layout of the tool is absolutely horrific. Yes, I put all of that out there. That is everything that I can think of to own upfront, and I'm sure, as we're discussing, I'll have more that I have to own that I did wrong or what have you. From the group perspective and being the person that tabulated everything, everyone, all seven of us participated, the majority of the participation of the individual evaluations, we, everyone left at least a portion of it blank, or I believe, in some cases, actually missed a part of the evaluation entirely. But it, in my untrained eye, I don't, I really strongly believe it wasn't enough to have to do it over, and, because it doesn't change the results overall. There were very few written comments from the school committee overall. Comments are only required when you have a ranking in the quantitative piece that is deemed by Desi to be either too low or too high, and then you're required to make a comment. In the cases where a comment was required, everyone did so. So that's, I guess, a plus. We, as a school committee, including the superintendent, collectively messed up on the goals and how those goals were assigned to focus indicators within the different standard areas. And I'll give you one example. There were, so there's a student learning goal, there's a second goal that I'm not remembering the name of right now, even though these should be burned into my mind, the profession, thank you. And there is the three, there are, there were district improvement goals, which you can determine that, as a school committee, as a superintendent, how many. There were three. I was the only one who voted, who rated on all three. Because when we put the instrument together that most people used to do their evaluation, the paper, we put them on there, but we all missed that we missed putting number three on there. Does that make sense? And so, because of how I work, I don't always work off of the last piece, like, oh, this is the final piece. I look at the different pieces that we had put together, including the original goals, of which there were three. So I rated the three, and then only when I went to tabulate everything did I realize, oh, only I noticed that there were three, because I wasn't using the same exact instrument copy, photocopy, as everyone else. So that's just one example of places where we all kind of messed up. And there's likely a few more. We will see, you'll see on your own, or I may mention. So the process itself requires that someone or someones within the school committee take the individual evaluations and create a summative evaluation. It does not require that every piece of the individual's evaluation makes it onto the summative evaluation. The summative evaluation is public, and the individual evaluations that each one of us did will be shared with the superintendent, but not at this meeting. And I think this is where I need to pause to remind, we hire, as a school committee, the superintendent, and that person is a person, is a human, and we are evaluating their performance within their job, and we are required by open meeting law to do that in a public session. And I can't think of another, there's others, but I can't think of another that's really this public, where a person's evaluation is right out there, front and center. And I think there has to be a human element to how we approach both our individual evaluations and our summative evaluations. So when I did the summative piece, including the quantitative and the comments, if the feedback didn't relate to the superintendent's goals, it was not included in the summative evaluation. And that included maybe taking out some comments that some folks made, not including, or summarizing their comments in the overall evaluation. So with all of that said, I think what I would like to do is, on the first page, the front page of the actual handout for the materials for this part of the meeting, for the evaluation, if you look at the graph there, you'll notice that step one, two, and three, as well as the goals themselves and our quantitative ratings, are on there. And what I would say about this overall is, there's a clear pattern. Like, not that there's any comparison to our self-evaluation, but our self-evaluation, when we looked at it in the overall, it didn't show a real clear pattern as clearly as this does. There's an obvious place where the evaluation kind of lies for each area. What is missing from the summative eval and the piece that I really did not quite comprehend when I put everything together and I evaluated and I synthesized all the information, is that almost never, when a district does a summative evaluation, do they include the drill down to the standard areas and how people rated there. And one of the things that we all, almost all did wrong, the majority of us did incorrectly, is, let me give you an example. Let's look at step two, assess performance on standards, and we have the four standards listed there. And if you remember the instrument, each of the four standards had its own rating area with the focus indicators underneath. Well, the focus indicators were the thing that we tied back originally to the superintendent's goals, and we said, these are the focus indicators that meet with the goals that we have approved. And most of us rated the superintendent on every focus indicator in those areas, and not just on the ones that were required as a part of the goals. So I guess, maybe it happens a lot, but it also is very kind of detailed and heavy information, particularly when we have such pretty clear agreement about the overall evaluation in what we see here. I did not include it. However, I have it, and if anyone wants to look at it, they can. I'd be happy to provide that. And after the meeting, I actually, I have a shared folder that has that in it, and I would be happy to provide it. But where we messed up and we are rating on things that we didn't agree to rate on, we can't really include it in what we're doing tonight. So where I would leave it open for discussion at this point, we first would need a motion. We do have to approve the evaluation. So I'd like to start with a motion, and then I would open it up for general discussion about the evaluation itself, the superintendent's performance on the goals, and any pieces that you want to talk about related to the process, including beating me up about how terrible it was. That's fine, as, that's totally within bounds. So I would start with a motion to approve the 2022 superintendent's summative evaluation as presented.
So move.
Member Wall, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Member Johnson Musa. And then, open for discussion. Member Daneev, you look ready?
Oh, I'm just.
Go ahead.
Since this was so painful for all of us and difficult because of how truly abysmal this instrument is, have we ever thought about using a different instrument? Because there are other districts that do this differently, and I just want the public to know and to just say that the superintendent is the only one at the top of this big pyramid that is not evaluated by educational professionals. So I'm curious, because I've read what other districts have done, if maybe a 360-degree, or I don't, maybe we don't have the ability to do a 360-degree interview process, but perhaps a different instrument that involves interacting with the people that you work with that know you. I mean, because how well do we all really know you? Like, do we really know you? No, but the people that work with you really know you and would have far more valuable information to impart to us. And I think it would be better for you, in the long run, to get really true, solid, actionable information using a different instrument. So I'm wondering if we can explore what we could do with that next year, so we don't have to do this useless thing again that doesn't give us what we need.
I couldn't agree more about the abysmal nature of the tool. And Amy and I have had several conversations about changing the tool very recently, in the last 48 hours, as a matter of fact, yes. I am very open to having a conversation about a tool, just, we have to agree on what that looks like.
That's all right.
Oh, I understand. I'm just hoping we can all discuss and come to some consensus, because I feel like this is useless for you and maybe not what you need and maybe not what we need.
I will say that I do get pretty regular feedback from the people who work with me. So.
So won't be a problem.
Very constructive and always appreciated. So, but in all seriousness, I do get feedback from staff.
Well, I'm sure, I'm not questioning that. I just want to make sure that what we are using is useful to you and continues the feeling of moving forward. Because I had a hard time with this, because I don't know you and we don't have a lot of time. So how can I really say, you know what I mean? So I want to be able to say, well, so-and-so has spent all this time with the superintendent and has seen these steps implemented and knows where she's going and has confidence. And then I can say, okay, well, we've talked to so-and-so, we feel confident, instead of just, you know, what, how do you think it's going? Well, how do I, I don't know. Do you know what I mean?
So, one thing that we, we haven't gotten to, but I do have my goals, the proposed goals for next year, one thing that you'll see, it looks different, so hopefully, they're easier to see. And last year was quite the thing. I don't know how else to say.
It was epic.
For every single person in education, last year was just something that we could not have ever comprehended. So I always do welcome constructive feedback, always. And I know everyone has areas of improvement, and I take my evaluation the same way I intend the evaluations that I do with the administrators and the department heads. It's all meant to move forward. What we do in terms of a tool, we can have a conversation about, probably not tonight, given the meeting, but I can't imagine that this year's process would be anything like what we just dealt with, even in terms of evidence being provided to the committee. I don't anticipate anything being the same. I hope nothing will be the same.
Well, and I'm really glad that that was the first comment question and that you brought that up, because one of the things I learned within the past 48 hours is, it's not a law that we have to do this at all or do, or use the tool. And as I was encountering challenges and trying to work through them, I realized a number of things that we could do as a committee to prepare better. So what I am going to propose is that the superintendent and I come back at the November meeting with some ideas about how we will do it differently for next year. And I've already secured operational assistance from Joel, the IT guy, in actually, whatever instrument that we have, we will put it online in a form that everyone can fill out without having to photocopy it or what have you. So that will make a huge, huge difference in the quality of the responses that we're able to tabulate. Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Considering our last self-evaluation Festivus experience, do you think that when we do find this new instrument, that we all decide works for us, is online or whatever, would it be helpful, perhaps, to have a third party aggregate the data so you don't have to go through this again?
Well, one thing that I'm considering, actually, as a committee, of the, of the school committee, I don't think it's appropriate to take it outside of the school committee. It's an evaluation of our superintendent. It needs to stay within us. But having two or three of us that work together on a uniform, easy-to-use instrument that covers the bases that we want and puts it out there in a timely way and supports the tabulation, I think that would be a huge improvement over this year.
Mm-hmm.
Vice Chair Wall, please.
I think that tonight, we saw the goals up on the.
In green part.
Yes, and I think that before, we were all newer to all of this and uneducated and terms were hard. But now, we see that we want to have the majority of the students in the green part of the triangle. We want to know the people in the red part are taken care of, and that makes it easier for us to evaluate her in the future, because if everybody's in red, you fail. Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Please, Member Johnson Musad.
I guess the process thing is, I guess our motion is essentially about accepting the evaluation as presented, and it makes sense probably to vote on that and just move on and then put on the future agenda about evaluation. But I guess before we do that, while we're still in discussion, Christine, is there anything you'd like to hear from us now about this evaluation? Was there anything in it that was especially useful to you, given the limitations of it? And is there anything that we can say to you now that would be useful to you?
I was not surprised by anything, which an evaluation should never be a surprise, because we should be giving feedback all along. So I was not surprised about anything. And no, I think all of you, despite the fact that I know Elizabeth said that, you know, I am able to interface with different members of the committee in different amounts of time, all of you have had the opportunity to share in different ways what, you know, you think are strengths and areas to improve. So again, no surprises, which is good. And I do feel like I get feedback from you folks, whether it's intentional or not. I get feedback, very perceptive. So, but that's okay, too. So, no, I'm pleased and I don't disagree with anything. So, thank you. I appreciate the question. I also appreciate your request to just move this along.
I was going to say, she wants it to be over. I'm fairly certain that's the answer. So one last thing before we vote. Oh, please, Member Danieve, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I think that that's a great place to be in, because when you, as somebody who has a business that's reviewed online, let me tell you, when you have, when it's all perfect, that's a problem. When it's all one star, that's also a problem. Real balance is when you have met proficient, and also maybe, maybe something's not going well. But, so it's nice, I mean, I felt comfortable seeing that there's a nice rainbow of things to work on and continue working on and be pleased with, and so on and so forth. Because a lot of superintendent evaluations that I looked at online were all just exemplary, 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 and you're like, hmm, interesting. So, you know, that's, that shows that the interaction is happening, which I think is really great. So I'm glad that we can all just vote and move on.
That's for me.
Please, Member Martini, go ahead.
What's the, well, I will second, third, sixth the comments about this evaluation being really bad. For me, in filling it out, I could, I felt like I could understand it pretty well. However, the way in which it is proscribed is so limiting that I really don't think that it spoke at all to our needs as a district from the superintendent. It was, it felt like an exercise in kind of uselessness in that regard. So, so I'll say that. And I also found it difficult, like Member Danieve was saying, to rate on certain things for which I feel like I would need the, some sort of feedback of people who work with and for the superintendent in order to know an answer about that, which, and that's hard to put your finger on when the channel for that type of communication is only always through the superintendent in one way. So that's difficult, and I would wholeheartedly support using an entirely different tool for doing this. So that being said, what's the consequence if we don't, like, vote to accept this?
Don't adopt it?
Yeah.
We just don't adopt it. We move on. We go into 2223. No? Sorry.
Well, I guess I'd appreciate if you'd at least agree that this is what I did, given this horrific tool, so that we can say, yes, this is what we did with this, and then we can move on. I don't know what it would say, like, in 10 years, if people looked back and said, they didn't adopt it? Like, what does that mean? So we don't like...
Susan Farber's notes are really good. They'll understand the context.
But, I mean, if you agree that this represents what you as a committee thought, big picture, I mean, we can...
And I didn't mean to stop on you or disagree. I'm just saying, if we don't do, there's no law. It's, we just move on. But I don't think that all of us voting down something that, I think it's, I'm not hearing anyone say this is, can't possibly be accurate. If it's generally accurate and, you know, the superintendent says, well, none of it was a surprise, I think we fulfilled the duty of doing an evaluation and we move, you know, we adopt it and we move on. And we clearly have said, there's problems and we need to do better. For me, at least, that's enough. We, there's problems and we need to do better. Member Danieve, go ahead.
Sorry. Me again. It would be really wonderful to use this as-is as a postmortem next year, when we look at the one that we adopt and we compare the two of them and see how we have grown and changed and how it is when we adopt a different one, the same way that we're probably going to do with this next self-evaluation that we do. We compare where we were before and where we are then. So it seems like if we said no to this, we may not have that moment in the looking glass to see what happened in the past.
I'm really hoping the votes will go in favor. That's all I can say.
Oh.
Any further discussion? Okay, so the vote is to adopt the superintendent evaluation as presented. Are there any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, so it does pass unanimously. Phew, don't have to worry about that. Thank you all. Thank you, Superintendent DeBarge, for participating in the process. And we are, we're going to move into the 2223 goals, and I just want to bring it up for consideration, and I did not talk about this with anyone beforehand, so y'all can shoot me down if you want to. It was, I believe it was my pace that I said, we'll do the goals at this meeting and we'll do the evaluation at this meeting. And I kind of feel like, at least for me personally, I would prefer to take a step back and actually do the goals next meeting, in the November meeting, so that we can digest and have a chance to look at the goals. I saw the goals for the first time yesterday, or maybe Tuesday, I don't know, this week. And it just, I feel like I need to digest them a little bit more. Just for discussion purposes, can I have a motion to table the goals and indicators for 2223 until the November meeting?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
And any just further discussion on that?
I think that's a perfect suggestion.
It's a great idea.
Okay. I don't have them very much, so put it on the calendar. Okay, so let's move to a vote on that. Any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, so that passes unanimously. We will do goals in November.
Okay.
Thank you again. And now we are on to approving the GPS organizational chart. I went through this packet really quickly. I know we had it in last year, last, what was it, September's meeting? And I don't see it in here again. Is it not in here again?
Yes.
It is? Okay, I believe you that it's there. I have looked at it already, because we had it in the last packet. What happened is, it was put in as correspondence. We didn't realize we were supposed to vote. I didn't realize we were supposed to vote on it, so we didn't vote on it. So a motion to approve the Greenfield Public Schools organizational chart as presented for, currently, we don't need a year on it.
So move.
And that's Member Wall, in a second.
Second.
And a second, Member Danieve. Any discussion of the organizational chart? So we'll move right to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, and that also passes unanimously. Thank you all on that. Now we're into the meat of it. Oh, the exciting part. Everyone's been, look at them all. They're all waiting for us to do...
Policies.
Yes, please. Member Johnson Musad, you do such a good job. Can you lead us through this?
Well, I'll just share a process piece and then pass it back to the superintendent. So just as a reminder, our process for reviewing policies is, the superintendent presents to us her version of the revised section, and then we will meet as a policy subcommittee. We will gather your input and have our own discussion and come back to you for the second reading with the version with any changes incorporated beyond what the superintendent has already done with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And this section in particular is very heavily within the superintendent's realm, so I'll pass it back to you, Christine.
Okay, so what happened is exactly what Glenn outlined. I went through, made notes, questions. We're using Liz's time a little differently that she's agreed happily to do. I do markup and comments. We share a folder.
Liz from MASC.
Liz LaFond from MASC, yes, thank you. She goes through, makes comments. You'll see throughout this packet, there's actually a lot of the markup that reflects recommendations for deletion of policies based on MASC. One of the challenges that, or one of the benefits that we have is MASC is in the process of reviewing all of their recommended policies. So some of her comments related to as recommended MASC, and she'll put a more recent date, is because they have just updated their policy. So what you'll also see in the comments are policies that were included in our policy manual that are not recommended by MASC and were created by a prior group of school committee members and are adopted solely for Greenfields and are very Greenfield-specific and are not necessary policy. I think, you know, generally, in those cases, I'm recommending deletion. One of the dangers of having too much policy is that you administrate to death what often is administrative decision-making. Many of the things that are being recommended for deletion in here are things that are actually identified in collective bargaining agreements. So it's not necessary. For example, if we're talking about how staff is allocated sick time, that's part of their contracts. So it's, worst case, it potentially creates a conflict between the ability of the negotiating body to negotiate and your policy. So you'll see many changes. We tried to, I tried to, but I will certainly do again, change the his and hers to the they's and thems, as the committee has wanted to do. So this is, I left the markups for your consideration. If there are no comments or suggestions that are sent to Glenn or to me, then I guess that would be the conversation at the subcommittee is where we go with that. But that's why you see all that mess in there.
Thank you. Thank you. So do we want a motion first and then discuss? I think that's better, motion first than that. So a motion to approve, oh...
We have a specific language.
I even have a note to myself, Glenn's going to have the wording.
I did, I'm sorry. I will need, so why don't you, we have a little discussion and I'll pull it up.
Oh, okay, great, sure. So discussion, questions about, yes, Secretary Exstrom, go ahead.
So who is making what comments on this? Because there are different places, some's highlighting green, some are in the sides.
Generally, like on the first page, personnel policy goals, policy GA, that comment in blue on the, in the margin is me, per Liz, MASC has deleted the policy.
Yeah.
So generally, I would say all the blue appears to be me. Yellow highlighting was done in the first, at some prior review. Liz has commented, she is number five, she's sort of the red. If you look on policy GBEA, there is a reddish-pink comment, that's Liz. Liz and I are the only two who made any comments in here. So I would say blue is me.
Is that highlighted on?
And then I don't know why the green was included. That was there when I got the section from her to re-review.
I just like, I guess. Thank you. No, well, we don't have the best eyesight, I think, of the people on here, so...
I'm happy to share the folder if that would make it easier.
Do you have it in, do you have it in a Google Drive folder?
I do.
So that might be something we could, we could have shared with the committee.
Of course.
Yeah, just...
Better lighting would probably help.
Well, and everyone has a chance, after the second reading, if there's anything we've missed tonight, anything you want, you want to discuss further later, we have a chance the next time we vote on it to take, to take that up. Further comments or questions? Please, Vice Chair Wall.
I just wondered about, you know, I'm just opening it randomly and it has family and medical leave, which again, is something that we're negotiating. Should that be taken out?
Can you tell me what policy number you're looking at? And I can...
GBGF.
GDCC-E.
Say again.
GDCC-E dash E.
Hold, please. C, C.
So that's a duplicate, because it's also GBGF.
I'm not looking in the, on the index, I'm looking at the actual...
Yes, I'm getting to it.
Got it.
Well done.
I'm seeing that throughout is, is things that I know we're in active negotiations about.
So GBCC, well, I'm going to miss it.
GDCC.
Oh, GD, thank you.
Yeah, I can't even tell you the page on this, sorry.
No, it's like, oh, I have it. GDCC is, I know, I have it. I'm touching every page but that. For goodness sake. Actually, the, that policy is actually being recommended for deletion, because it's covered under G, B as in boy, GF as in Frank, and what this policy does is outline what is in statute.
Okay, so it will not be in the policy, and I don't know the, the way to evaluate each page based on colors, but...
Oh, so the whole blue are, I'm deleting, recommending deletion. So GB, GF, so we had duplicative policies where recommending deletion of one that is very, very detailed. And the other one that is being recommended, that I can't find to save my life, is just a statement of what's, there it is, family medical leave. The one that we're making the recommendation to remain says the superintendent will comply with the requirements of Family Medical Leave Act. It doesn't do anything other, so I am...
And that is?
It's a requirement that I comply. So that's all that the policy would end up saying at the end if you accept the deletions.
So GBGF is the one that will be, will remain?
Correct.
Yeah.
Secretary Exstrom, and then Member Johnson Musad.
I'm going to poke a bear, and teachers and IAs and whoever else I'm sure will want to strangle me. Why is it that we're negotiating these things when they are already policies that are standing?
If I may, we're negotiating language in sections of the contract.
Right. But why would they be included in the contract as opposed to...
I think the issue is that, is what I pointed out when I first talked about this section, is many things in here are things that are covered by collective bargaining and are not mandatory policy, yet Greenfield in prior years have made it a policy. So it's unnecessary to have in...
That's why it's recommended for deletion, it is not necessary, and it's covered in collective bargaining and the general statement that we're going to follow the law.
Correct.
Yeah, Member Johnson Musad.
I'm ready with the motion.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the first reading of amendments to Section G Personnel as presented.
A second. Any further discussion? Please, Member Johnson Musad.
Do we have staff who are not represented by a union? And how would their similar issues that are under collective bargaining agreements be handled? Are those in a separate, non-union personnel personnel manual or something?
Short answer is yes. They have higher letters that outline their benefits. And FMLA is a law, so regardless, I still have to follow the provisions, so.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, please. I actually did. No wonder you didn't know. Further discussion or questions? Not hearing any. Any, we'll move to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Thank you all for reading through that.
And I'll put the shared folder. I'll make it available to all of you so you can read it in the Google folder.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously means it goes to policy for their review and whatever before it comes back to us again.
Yes.
Putting that out there.
Yes, thank you. Next item, final item in the public session is the new business. I will have a note, I have a note about previous new business. I've done nothing to follow up on tools for us and the self eval. I will do that for November. I knew we had all of this coming up. I wasn't too worried about it. We've got plenty of stuff we can, we'll do in November. Any new business folks want to bring up? So I saw Member Johnson Musad first and then Secretary Exstrom.
It's not necessarily new business. Oh, I'm sorry, jeez.
Okay. I am interested in having a discussion about preparing for a possible wave of COVID infections, in particular after Thanksgiving and after Christmas. So think, having a discussion about, about preventions we might be able to proactively think about, such as having a limited period of a new masking policy or, or doing a remote instruction for a week or two after the vacation. So I'm interested in discussing that.
Okay, thank you. And Secretary Exstrom.
This isn't new business, but I don't recall us hearing about Ms. Fenimore's. There's a piece in our, in our packet that wasn't discussed out loud.
I, I, I checked with Lauren, but I don't think she understood what I was asking. And I had bugged Lauren like 35 times in the last 48 hours, so I couldn't bug her again and possibly get an answer, which is fine. We need to do better. Correspondence, please see attached. We should have something attached, so make sure it draws people's attention, and that hasn't happened. That's also how we missed voting on the org chart because it was just in there and it wasn't an agenda item. Yeah, so we're, we're working on getting all of that ironed out.
So what I have taken, what I have started doing since I got here is if I receive a commendation from a parent, from another staff member, from a community member about one of our staff, I respond and do a letter of commendation to that staff member and include what I received with them. And I have asked Lauren to include those in your packets going forward so that people on our staff who have been commended for their work can receive recognition. So my hope is you will see lots of these regularly, but they will be in, just attached as correspondence, no action.
No action required.
No action.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle Fenimore, for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Yeah, Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
Can I ask a question about the correspondence as an agenda item? I don't understand exactly.
It's not really an agenda item. That's what I was trying to talk to Lauren about. It needs to be structured differently. It should just be a list. When, when Dr. Hul was here, we got a list of the correspondence within the agenda, and it was just a way to draw your attention to the items. And somehow that fell away and we just need to get it back.
And in our notes, do we have in our notes a list of the documents that support the minute? Because I think that's required by open meeting law to have a list of documents that are provided at the meeting in the minutes, but.
I think it's all, yes, it's all within the same thing that's, yeah, that we need to be doing better. Yes.
Yeah, so there, okay, there it is. It would be included in that, yeah. Meeting materials.
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for new business? Okay, so I think that the executive session blurb is incorrect. We are not returning to open session. It says we will return. We are not returning to open session, so. Are you saying we, it's not timely? We could delay executive session to November?
We could. I'm looking at the member who made the request for the follow-up. If we still want the follow-up, we can.
It was, I, I think it's Member Martini.
You are looking at me. I did, I did, but I actually didn't see that topic on the agenda for this executive session. All I saw was an approval of the previous minutes.
No, there's a, there's an item related to security and safety that is a, that's an exemption under open meeting law.
Then I deeply apologize to everyone, but I would really like to hear about that this evening.
That's fine. That's totally fine. You don't have to apologize.
I know it's nine o'clock.
And it's okay. And an aside at this point, too, is you don't ever need to say I'm sorry when you start your comment. I'm talking to that end of the table. You don't need to say you're sorry, you just do your comment. You don't have to be sorry about having a comment. You're here to have comments, and we want to hear them. Okay, so we are going to do, first open this executive session and then we will do a close of the public session because we are not returning to the open session. So I would like a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL C30A, Section 21A, exemption four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, and also exemption seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. This is the approval of executive session minutes from August 10. And like I said, we will not return to open session. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
That was Member Martini, a second.
Second.
Member Johnson Musad. We do need to do a roll call vote on that. Please, Secretary Exstrom.
Member Denise?
Yes.
Secretary Exstrom, yes. Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner, sorry. Yeah, it's getting late. We're unanimous.
Okay, and a motion to adjourn the public session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any no's or abstentions to adjourning the public session? Thank you all. We are adjourned as of 8:59. Have a great night.